... The supervisor by the beginning and please enter the feedback form following each interview. After completion, they will be distributed to all board members. And now we'll proceed to where I'm at, yeah, it is. Dr. Black, it's a pleasure having you with us here today. For the following interview questions, you will have the opportunity, you will have the opportunity following the interview questions. You will have an opportunity to ask questions and make, including remarks as time allows. We have the opportunity to review your resume. Please tell us how your background and experiences making a good fit to the Redford Union's next superintendent and why you want to be our superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for having me. It's always a pleasure to come and talk to people about one of my passions, which is, which are children. So, why is Dr. Sean Black the right fit for Redford Union? I think for several reasons, and why right now? Number one, I have a proven track record of success as educational leader. I think that's important, that you bring someone in who can move the academic needle. And my experience, my track record, has proven that I can do that. That's number one. So if we get into that, I have standardized tests which outside people judge, state judges, I have about a thirty percent increase in places I've been as a district and school leader. Inside the school, school culture and climate, suspension rates of districts and schools I've been at, not killing Detroit, because I haven't done that metric yet, down fifty-five percent. And then I think it's also important that we talk about graduation rates. So when I was a school leader, over graduation rates, over graduation, over seniors, it increased eight percent in one year. So I think, that I think is important, and I think that makes me someone who could fit the Redford Union School District, because I bring those skills of system leadership to the district. I'd also like to mention that in my time as an educational leader in terms of success and track record, I led a school to reward status, and on the flip side, I've also helped several schools get off the priority school list. Michigan's now doing the partnership school list. So, in terms of moving needle, I've done it in different places, different contexts. I'm also, right now, I'm assistant superintendent in Detroit Public Schools, I'm over twenty-three schools, nine hundred and sixty employees, and ten thousand, just under ten thousand, we're at nine six hundred students. So, I mention that because my schools aren't on the news, my schools don't have major problems or disruptions because of the type of leadership that I work with my principals on a daily basis. Next, I want to talk about why I think I'm so fit beyond that, is because when we think about education, we think about the current context. The current context of Redford Union, we have to be mindful of equity. I have extensive work of equity at the Achievement Network, which is a nonprofit out of Boston. Enrollment, enrollment in micro cohort schools in Detroit have gone up nine point three percent since two thousand and eighteen. So I understand what it takes to get enrollment to increase. The real trick is, or the real skill is, how do you keep people to re-enroll? I also want to mention about budgeting, and now I think about there are two outstanding budgets I need to approve this evening after I leave here, but I'm over twenty-three schools, so I mean, there's twenty-three budgets that I approve. And when I was in Van Dyke, I was a Title I budget, which was three point, I think, six million dollars at the time. So I'm understanding the budget process, so I bring that to the district as well. Then I also believe that, once again, why Redford Union right right now, context matters. And I've been in Van Dyke, which is a more districted neighbors of Detroit, so I'm familiar with a community where demographics are changing, and the challenges the community and school district might experience. So I have that experience as a distributor. As a school leader, I worked in Battle Creek Public Schools as a system principal, and even though Battle Creek's on the other side of the state, Battle Creek's demographics are very, very similar to Redford's. Very, very similar, almost a five percent difference, but very similar. So I'm very familiar with what it takes to move the needle in that type of context as well. And then, I think right now, what really matters is teaching experience. I saw the article in the paper about the teachers, and I believe that teaching experience matters because we have to really move the needle in Redford. I bring that experience in sophomore public schools, where I was a teacher. Once again, I've worked in two districts outside of Detroit, not just, I'm not just a Detroit-only candidate, but I've worked in two districts outside of Detroit, one as a teacher, one as a district leader. So I understand the challenges that a neighboring district to Detroit experiences with enrollment, with student discipline, with academic climate and culture, I'm aware of that. And then, I think the big thing is achievement. Right now, my cohort of schools, my schools are outperforming the other three cohort, or other two cohort of schools in math and E L A. Since I've been assistant superintendent, and I say the metric we use, we use a test called I-R-A-G. I think you guys use N W A. And by using this metric, our schools, since I've been assistant superintendent in reading, and once again, we're still in pandemic, have gone eighteen percent in math, fifteen percent. So once again, working with principals to really, despite our challenges that we have right now, moving the needle academically, always putting academics first. And then I'll close with this. I truly believe that to be a superintendent, to be a leader, you have to have interpersonal skills. So it's one thing to be smart, everyone I think is smart, but it's also to have those soft people skills to bring people together, and when you bring people together, solve problems. It's one thing to talk about problems, as one of my college coaches would say, you can't be all talking and no action all your life. You have to solve problems. So, I'll close with, I am a solutions-based, results-oriented school leader who has district and school leader experience, teacher experience, and I also believe that eliminating challenges, and by doing so, will build a brighter future for all students in Redford Union Public Schools. So that's why I believe that I am a good fit for Redford Union Public Schools right now. I do, I want to close with this, lastly, the bond is very important to this community. I understand that, but when the bond is gone, what are we still talking about? The experience that children have, and who is going to be that person who will be able to push academics when, after the bond has passed? I believe in that person, and I'm a fit for this district.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to our vice president for the next question, Mr. Rosowski. I'm sorry, I have to start you, and I'm getting all kinds of trouble for it. Sorry, everyone.
Good evening. Please share an example of a primary that led to a standing multi-year improvement initiative, be specific regarding the situation, the capacity, your specific role in the outcome.
Okay, so, thank you for the question. Multi-year initiatives are very important. Multi-initiative, multi-year initiatives should be driven by strategic plan. So one thing, as superintendent of Redford Union Public Schools, if I'm that person, I would definitely make sure we have a strategic plan that drives all our multi-year initiatives. So, in terms of specific situation, in Detroit Public Schools, I led the Leadership Development Program in Detroit Public Schools, that initiative. So it was born out of the fact that I think everyone's familiar, Detroit Public Schools are under emergency management, so they were led by non-educators for almost a decade. And because when you have non-educators in that aspect, to look at business-type plans, and I think we understand what the business approach is done in public schools, student achievement is not the priority. And so how am I tying it to leadership development? Well, if principals and assistant principals are working with teachers to push academics, then who is developing them to make them better, to push academics? So, that's what we realized from the gap analysis, that we need to do in Detroit Public Schools, that after ten years of being ignored, principals and assistant principals, we need to invest in them, invest in their training, so we can push them so they can actually change and push academics. So, the strategic plan is, our strategic plan related, where I was involved, and it was around exceptional talent. So you can't have exceptional talent in a personal position if you're not providing any professional development to the principals and assistant principals. So my specific task was, one, to develop three programs, one for teachers who wanted to become assistant principals, two for assistant principals who wanted to become principals, and for new principals. So that was my task, to design those three programs and to work with those three groups of people throughout the year. The results of that program were the following. Out of the twenty-two new principals that I've worked with, nineteen of the twenty-two, I'm just kidding, we had twenty-three, nineteen out of twenty-three are still in the district, that's number one. Number two, four of those twenty-three principals had double-digit gains on the M-Step that, that next, that next spring after working with them throughout the school year. And then, then three of them had the highest scores in the district. And then one principal was actually honored by the Mackinaw Policy Group, I'm forgetting the full name. But she was recognized, her school was recognized for having outstanding achievement in the state of Michigan. And then I want to mention, the next group was the aspiring principals. So we have a principal screener, so you have to pass a screener test to be put, to be considered to be a principal in our district. And so, my job was to make sure that, one, one of my tasks I forgot to mention was to make sure that people actually passed the screener. So I wasn't giving them the questions, it was, these are the standards of leadership you need to understand so you can be successful in it. And so, when that happened, thirteen of those twenty-two assistant principals passed the screener. Nine out of those thirteen are principals in the district now. And then, the last group, the teachers who wanted to become assistant principals, I'll be quick, so I can manage my time. We had eighteen vacancies in assistant group vacancies in two thousand and nineteen in that summer. Nine out of those eighteen were filled by people in my academy, and two of those nine are principals already. So, that district initiative was very important to our, to our district, to the success of our district that we're experiencing right now. And I'll close with my successor has built upon the work that I started, and she just sent in a grant request for five million dollars to the Shot Foundation, that's not, not Shot Foundation, the Wallace Foundation, to expand our work in Detroit. So, I would like to say that that initiative has bearing fruit, even though I'm not there, and the result of my work, in two thousand and eighteen, I was promoted to assistant superintendent the next school year. So I want to just add that as well. But, once again, if you don't train principals and assistant principals to move the needle, if you don't invest in them, then you won't have the results that you want for kids. And as someone who wants to be a superintendent, I have that pedigree, and I know that I can make not just the principals better, but I know that if they're better per the research, then the students will learn as well, and their results will be better. So, that's a multi-initiative year thing that I led, and it's still on.
Secretary Roden.
Hi.
Hello.
Managing vision and purpose involves anticipating future trends, creating a compelling vision, and communicating that vision. Describe a situation that conveys your capability in this area.
So in terms of vision, when I was in Van Dyke Public Schools, we had a, we didn't have a vision for what we wanted, and the big thing we were lacking in terms of vision was academic culture. So, we need to have a vision of what the academic culture should be in Van Dyke Public Schools. So, when I first got to Van Dyke, that was one of the first things that I was given. But also, it was just a climate and culture for learning in general. We never had, in my two years there, we did not have one valid, none of our valuetorys had four-point-oh. We didn't have any AP classes, so there was a lot of work to be done there, to build academic culture. So, in terms of vision, to have a vision, people have to see it. And they have to see what the actual challenge is, or like, as I like to say, what's the opportunity for success for children? And, when I was in Van Dyke, it was, one, bringing the teachers in. So I surveyed every teacher about what the academic vision and academic culture in Van Dyke should be. That's number one. But two, bringing in all the stakeholders as well. So it's hard to have a vision, so it's one thing for me to think about in my office, but it's hard, but to get volume, to get traction, you have to get other people and other voices and feedback in the room. So, that's what I did in terms of the task, and then actually the action was, besides the surveys, we actually changed code conduct because our suspension rate was not good. And we also changed how we were going to actually look at interventions for students. Because we had a reading deficit, we had a mathematics deficit. But if I'm in third grade, reading on a first grade level, and I get no additional intervention, or basically like a doctor, if the dosage doesn't change, how are we expecting the results to change? So we really had to change that whole orientation to learn and academics and supporting students. And when we did that, the results were, we had, started with suspension rate, we had a negative, well, minus thirty-seven percent, so negative thirty-seven percent decrease in obstacle suspensions that first year. And then, also in terms of academics, we had, I'm forgetting the exact number, but we increased on the M-Step, I want to say like twelve percent or so, I'm being generous, being conservative, it was put as double digits. And the one school that we did have those on priority list was removed from the priority list. So, those were results of doing that academic culture, but the big thing that I think we had big success was really understanding that we need to support students differently, because the data was telling us we need to support students differently. Doing the same thing and expecting different results was not working in Van Dyke. So, that's what I was tasked to turn to pre-intention, so people could see that, and once they saw that, we were able to remake a real systemic change for students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Gray.
Share a situation that demonstrates your ability to create a climate in which value diversity is the norm. What are your experiences working in a diverse community?
So in terms of working in a diverse community, I would say, definitely my experience in Battle Creek is an example of working in a diverse community. The demographics are very similar to, student demographics are very similar to Redford. And then also, in Van Dyke, that was very diverse in terms of the student population, and of course, the adult population as well. So that's my experience in terms of working with diverse populations. But, to answer your question, diversity in school is important, because when I was in Van Dyke especially, it was hard to see the actual student. And what do I mean by that? There are instances where students were just categorized. And when that, when that happens, that's not good for education, that's not good for these kids. So, for us, it was really training teachers on implicit and explicit bias. So, sometimes you might be saying something that you don't know is really offensive to a student. The one word we really worked to get out of our students in terms of making this a diverse and actually a rich experience for students, was these students. That was like the biggest turnoff that you could see, that happened when I was in Van Dyke, these students, these students. So we had to really eliminate that. So we went through restorative practices, training with teachers, went through classroom management, because it was a classroom management issue as well, that some people couldn't manage their classroom because they couldn't, they just categorized students, you were misbehaving. Well, I wasn't really misbehaving, because when we went to the other question, when we redid the code conduct, we made, you couldn't write kids up for not having a pencil. Yes, I know you shook your head when you had that happen. So we had to really get around that, we had to really make sure that when students were in trouble, their assistant principal office is for, and for general reason, that the teacher could not solve herself. And I think that made a difference. So in terms of diversity, well, I think you have to be diverse in your understanding, not just of who's working in the school, but diverse in terms of the children that you serve. How do you understand where they come from, how do you meet them halfway? And I think a big thing to answer your question is, how do you understand student engagement research? Because it's very key that you understand the reasons around student engagement, because when I, as an open, when children are treated a certain way, and say it's a white teacher and a black teacher, it becomes an issue. And so it's very imperative that we work with teachers so they understand that, yeah, we have this situation, but this is how you mitigate the situation, because your words and how you categorize students and treat students affects how one probably behave, how they respond to you, and things of that nature. And the big thing about diversity, I'll close with this, is I want to get away from black and white and get into diverse in terms of thought. I think it's to be a real diverse district, you have to be diverse in the people that you bring in to bring in different types of thought. I say that because my experience in the district, and most of it has been in Michigan, but when I went to work in the Achievement Network, and I was able to travel to Boston, to Denver, to New Orleans, and to DC, and I really got to see that diversity of thought, of how you really reach kids, I think it was actually the best experience. It's been one of the best experiences, the best two years of my career, a good decision I made, because I got to see it a little bit differently. So when I think of diversity, it's not just black and white for me, it's also diversity of thought. Because when you can bring in thought partners and bring in knowledge, you will become a better school district. So, I'm not sure if I really answered your question, but when I think of diversity, I think of more things than just black and white.
Thank you. Trustee Dan.
Hello, Mr. Black.
Hello.
You're on, man, clear.
So, tell us about your-
You're on, man.
There, folks. So tell us about your experiences with student discipline and restorative justice, and how you address these practices while also ensuring equity in the final outcome.
Okay, so in terms of restorative justice, when I was in Van Dyke, I actually implemented restorative practices in the district. So we had a trainer come in, she trained the entire staff on restorative practices. So that coincided with our change in the code conduct as well, because we implemented restorative justice in the code conduct as well. So that's my experience with restorative justice. But in that whole aspect, I think it's really, really important to understand that the whole notion of restorative practices, and it's ironic that you asked that question, because our district just had a restorative practices webinar, and I was listening to it when I was getting ready to come here. So, you have to be able to heal the harm, and that's the big thing to make it successful. Understanding when you're wrong, acknowledging when you're wrong, but using the right language as well. And language does matter. So that's been my experience with restorative justice. So, I mentioned kind of Van Dyke, what we did with it, and I think the result after we implemented it was, once again, the negative thirty, thirty-seven percent decrease in obstacle suspensions. And I really think, once again, we really, besides restorative justice and restorative practices, and we really worked on student engagement. How do you get students engaged? The biggest, biggest thing you'll see, and the biggest thing I saw in Van Dyke, not Van Dyke, Battle Creek when I was there, you had kids who would come to school every day, but not do anything. So we call those silent F's. So we had to develop systems to really get those students engaged. And then, in terms of equity, when I worked with the Achievement Network, we were an equity-driven organization, so we always looked at district policies, we always looked at curriculum, and we always looked at assessments. Because we figured we looked at those three things, and we could analyze the validity and strength of those three areas, we could really work in terms of getting students to close the gap percent. And the big thing is, if we're going to close the gap, it really starts with understanding where we are with our data. Historically, why has it been this way? What are the trends in the data? Also, what are the actions that we need to take to improve the data? So it's one thing to say, students aren't reading, but what specifically aren't they doing in reading? Is it vocabulary? Is it phonetic awareness? Is it phonics? What aren't they doing well in terms of reading, in math? Is it geometry, algebra thinking? Is it, what specifically are they not doing well? So, that's the other part of equity, is being really data-driven, to understand where those gaps the students have, and then being able to fix them. So, in the Achievement Network, I built school-level improvement plans in all my schools, and that's one of the big things we did to really advance equity, was to look at their tools, their curriculum, and their assessment, and also their instruction. But also, we made sure we understood their data, so we could develop an action plan in that school that really addressed what their issues were. So I'll just give you one example in terms of result. At a school that was in the EEA at the time, Nolan, we had a group of eighth graders, a cohort of eighth graders, when they took the M-Step their first time, well, the first time they started giving M-Step, they were below five percent. That same cohort, by the end of eighth grade, by, once again, doing our action plans, understanding data, pushing the equity that way in terms of being data-driven, they're at fifty-two percent proficiency in two years. So, I believe that my process in terms of understanding data, understanding how to close gaps, is a way to drive equity as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Coloy.
Hi.
Hello.
How have you gone about earning trust in previous positions, and how would you go about doing so if chosen for this position?
Well, trust isn't given and earned. So it will start off with just understanding that I am here to help students. I'm not here for any other inferiority reason or anything like that. I am here to help children, and I think most people can get on board with that. And then from there, we'll develop trust. But in terms of actual situations, we can kind of relate to that, instead of talking about it in theory. My new principals, when I became their supervisor, there was, there was a trust issue, because I wasn't a long-time DBS'er. So it really started with me, number one, saying that I attended Detroit Public Schools, I, my first professional job was in Detroit Public Schools. So that got me a little credibility, but then where do we get the trust? The trust really came in when I told them that if I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna follow up on it. So it's hard to trust somebody that says, I need you to do A, and you never do A, you never follow up on A, I never hear about A. So I think that's really important, how to develop trust. But also, in terms of developing trust, it's a part of what the company says, you understand to be understood. So if you want to develop trust, you've got to listen to people, feel what they are experiencing, and then take action. Because it's hard to trust someone, and they, every time I go, and they'll say, every time I go to you, I talk to you, I pour my heart out, and nothing happens. Why should I trust you anymore? I said, you say you're gonna do A, and you don't do A, you don't do B, you don't do anything. So, another part of trust is being a person of your word, and taking action when you say you're gonna do it. And just being honest, being honest about the situation. If you, if I can't do something, I'm gonna be honest, and say, that's something I just need to do. And I think that establishes trust right there, because I'm just being honest from the get-go. I'm not selling a broker promise, I'm not a used car salesman, I'm being honest from the get-go. I cannot do that, I don't have the purview to do that. And I think that develops trust, and that's how I will do it in this district. But I think the big thing is listening to all stakeholders, understanding their situation, but then being able to take actions appropriately, that's how you develop trust. And then they start to trust you, because they're gonna start to see the results of your actions.
Trustee Gray.
Please tell us what your culturally competent means to you, and give an example of what you demonstrate as a teacher.
When I think about culturally competent, I also think about advancing equity. I, I kind of lump those, kind of those two in the same, same bucket. You have to really understand the bias that is in the curriculum. You have to understand the bias that might be in policies, bias that might be in programs in the school district. So I think, and I think you get that from- So I think, and I think you get that from looking at the data. So it's hard to be culturally competent, or it's hard to advance equity, if you're not analyzing the data to see what's going right and what's going wrong in that multiple areas. If we don't have any kids hypothetically in band, why is that? So we need to really examine that. So, um, but that's what's again, is being data-driven. If that's just making wild assumptions, it's being data-driven. Um, but that's how you really get to being culturally competent and advancing equity. So a situation that I can remind, I can just think of real quick is, um, it was one of our, with the Achievement Network, and once again, we're about being culturally competent and advancing equity. Um, I had a school, and the issue was really, the teachers really didn't understand, because I work with principals and teachers, the, the teachers really didn't understand how to break the game down. And when I say that, if a kid is not proficient, it actually breaks down where they're not proficient at. And it was really a, uh, thing to advance equity, culturally competent on the subgroup you were working with, to understand what their deficits were and how you fix them. So that's an example of when I led culturally competent, advancing equity work, is really looking at being data-driven and around student achievement data, and taking a deep dive into historical gaps and how we close those gaps. So it's one thing to say, you, you need to work on vocabulary, but what's the strategy behind improving vocabulary for students and for readers? Um, so I bring that to the table in terms of culturally competent. But the other thing is, we have to understand what we're reading, what kids are reading. Because, uh, research has shown that when, especially those of the large subgroup of African-American students, if they're reading literature that is, uh, not, uh, that does not even favor them. And I've actually dealt with three parent concerns in Detroit this week about issues in our curriculum. Uh, it can really, uh, it says that maybe you aren't a culturally competent district, because you haven't reevaluated, you haven't looked at your curriculum, given your current clientele students. Uh, so that's my experience with being culturally competent, is really driving or advancing equity being data-driven, and really looking at, uh, why students aren't successful beyond the basic numbers.
Thank you. Tell us how you maintain visibility and accessibility for staff, parents, and members.
Okay, so in terms of visibility, accessibility, um, currently in my current role, I have twenty-three schools, and my schools aren't clustered on one side of town. I have school, I have a school that's on the border of Redford, well, it's the closest one to Redford. I have a school all the way by Groves Point, I have a school by Grove Ridge. So I have twenty-three schools spread out across the city of Detroit. Um, so, but I still visit three of my schools per day. Now, I'm not a superintendent, I'm a assistant superintendent, so I don't deal with everything the superintendent does, but I see most of it. And I think that that's one thing that would break to refer you in, is not just visiting one school per day, but visiting multiple schools per day. You have to be visible. Uh, and also in terms of that, if you're going to move the needle academically, you have to inspect what you expect. So it's hard for me to sit in the administration building, send out emails, saying, I need you to do this, I need you to do that. And I'm not in schools to see it done, or I'm not in schools to coach the principals on how it should be done. Um, so that's how you really maintain visibility, is making sure that the initiatives that the board wants and that the superintendent thinks are necessary, that they're being done with fidelity. Now, in terms of accessibility, I do believe in a constituent response system, meaning that my email will be on the district website. Uh, if a parent has a concern that it hasn't been routed through the school, then I will address it. I believe that that's how you really maintain accessibility. Um, I believe responding to emails, and that's a, a practice of my current superintendent. He had, we have a fifty-dollar student district, and he responds to every single email. And I believe that's something that's very important. Uh, parents give you the most precious gift, which is their child, and the least you can do is respond to their email if they know their concern, if they call you about a concern. So I also believe in being responsive. That's one of the expectations I'll have from principals and teachers, if parents reach you, call, or reach out to you, for you to reach back out. Um, that's very important to me. Um, I think to close my answer with accessibility, it's very important that people understand that you are a listener. And one thing about being accessible is, and being visible is, having listening sessions with the community. It's one thing for me to come from Detroit, or wherever I'm coming from, to say, well, this is what I think. I have a PhD, trust me. I think to be accessible and to be visible, you have to meet people where they are, and you have to listen to their concern. So beyond board meetings and public comment, it will be more about listening sessions. I'm just here to listen. You tell me your concern, and we'll address it. That's how you move forward, that's how you build trust. And I think that's the approach, and I, I'm not saying that's the thing, that is the approach I would take. Um, and so that's how I'm gonna leave it right there. So in terms of right now, um, that's how, that's the exact practice that I do right now. So in terms of situations, a parent emails me, a parent calls my office, I respond, I investigate, I respond, and give them either written or talk to them over the phone about their concern. So that's the approach I use currently, and the results, not one of my schools has been on the news. I think that's the biggest result from doing that process. When you follow up, people are not, I'm not gonna go to Fox News, I'm not gonna do this, or so and so forth. They'll meet you halfway, because you're actively, actively working on their problem and addressing it, sorry. So in terms of accessibility, visibility, that's the approach I'm gonna take, uh, if I'm the superintendent here. I will not be some person, hides, I'm not saying hides, but just send out emails. I don't, and not visit schools, and not talk to parents, and not talk to students. Um, I just think that that's important, that you listen to everybody, so you can get a full grasp of what you need to do to improve this, uh, the district.
Thank you, Mr. Sasek.
Often learned that successfully facing challenges or experiencing mistakes with others, please share a time when this was the case for you. What did you learn from this, from the experience? How do you reply with it?
So, I'm gonna take you way back, because I've been thinking about, about recently, um, my experience in college. Um, so I, I obviously had a full scholarship by the high school, uh, to play football. I was meant to pound fire though, so, um, but, um, the experience I had was, I got frustrated with my head coach so, and I got one of those blurbs, when you get really upset, and I quit, quit the football team, gave up my scholarship, with no backup plan. And I take that experience every day into my professional life, twenty-something years later, because what I learned was, you can't make impulsive decisions. And so as a leader, that's one thing I don't do. I don't make impulsive snap decisions. That's just what the big thing I learned about that, because those have big consequences. And when I came to my senses, only a hollered turnpike. Because I was on my hollered turnpike when I came to my senses, because my parents' car broke down. And so I'm stuck on the side of rural, my own marker on twenty-one, and I'm like, I made a mistake. And so as soon as I got to a phone, because there weren't cell phones, well, there were cell phones, but I couldn't phone one back then, um, it was, oh, we gave your scholarship away. So with that being said, I learned a hard way that you can't make impulsive decisions. And so I also learned from that experience, you know, it's an athletic one that I take into my professional life, is that sometimes people don't know how hard you're working, and they're making snap judgments about you. So it's very important that you also share at times the successes that you are having, things that you are doing. And so years after that, I found out my head coach was upset with me, because he thought that I didn't work out that entire summer, that I came to camp out of shape. And so that's why I was getting mistreated, mistreated in camp, uh, and that wasn't the case. Uh, it's just I had a family situation where I had to stay in Detroit that summer, I couldn't be an academic here. Um, so with that being said, I learned that from that failure, and that's how I carry that failure into my daily life as a leader. I don't make snap emotional decisions, because those have consequences. And when I'm doing things that should be, uh, noted, I, I make sure that people understand, these are the things we are doing, these are the great things that we are doing, especially for your kids. Sometimes everybody doesn't see that, sometimes they even don't.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I'm here. Okay. Tell us what budget development process you use to gain broad support for the final results.
So the budget development process that I've used in multiple, uh, districts is a zero-based budgeting process, where you start with your strategic plan and a budget from there. So whatever our priorities are in the strategic plan, those really guide what the budget should be. Uh, so that's the process I've used in Van Dyke and in Detroit Public Schools as well. Um, so what are your priorities? So in terms of my context right now, with my twenty-three schools, I actually use the data that those schools have right now, in terms of where are you good at, where are you weak at. So if you're strong in culture and climate, but we're weak in reading, then what we're doing in terms of reading supports, in terms of actual getting Wayne Rees and coaches in there, things of that nature. Uh, so that's kind of how, uh, well, that's the process I use, not kind of how, that is the process I use for budget development. Uh, but also in terms of budget development, to get widespread support, and once again, it starts with the strategic plan. So that's something the board and I would agree upon. And then the other thing is, also knowing what the board's priorities are in the budget as well, is very important. So I think the, the budget process is not just, hey, this is what we should do. It's once again, something that's agreed upon by the superintendent and the board, so then once again, it can be approved by the board. Uh, so that's, I think, we'll go through the committee process, the finance committee process. And then when you have that completed, then you can actually have the full, uh, budget completed. Uh, so that's a process I've used, um, and it's been successful in terms of not going over budget, um, not having, um, things. The last thing I'll talk about, the budget process or budget development process is important, is that you have to look at the cost effectiveness. And that's what I actually learned in Detroit, I'm not in Detroit, I'm still in Van Dyke, was, we were just funding programs that just weren't successful for kids. So that's something I definitely do not do as a superintendent. It's just fund programs, because you've always done it. But you've always done it, but look, look at the results. Maybe when you do something differently, you look at it a little bit differently. So, um, that's a big part of budget development process. Once you budget, and then it's hard to make that pivot in the middle of the school year. And the last thing is, of course, is the data. The data is also gonna be a very important piece to understand what you should budget, what your priorities should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig.
Tell us about your involvement in collective bargaining in general, and describe the most challenging negotiations you have conducted. What was so challenging about it? Which of your negotiation techniques was most effective, and what were the results?
Okay, so in terms of, uh, working with unions and collective bargaining, that was something that I did as a assistant superintendent in Van Dyke. Um, so we met with the union leaders bi-weekly, and by doing so, we were able to have open dialogue about our challenges financially. And the big thing, of course, was enrollment. Enrollment was decreasing, so with salaries frozen, um, how can we actually improve or increase salaries or unfreeze salaries if, once again, we're projecting another two-hundred-and-fifty students leaving the district? Um, so the challenging part of that was getting the union leadership at the time to see that, once again, we have to really see what we're doing in classrooms that are causing students to leave the district. People don't leave the district when they're having a good time. That, I don't think that, that happens. People leave when they have a negative experience. People don't go back to a Best Buy if they have a negative experience. I'll take my money to Amazon or somewhere else. I'm not gonna go there. So I think we had, we had to really get them to understand that we can't unfreeze these salaries until we actually solve the enrollment problem. But the other part of it is, we had to get the union president to see that it was more than what district leaders could control, because we weren't in classrooms every day. And the feedback we're getting from parents was just negative experiences in the classroom. We'll go elsewhere. With this, as we say, with this market-based system that we have in Michigan, they have, they're able to do so. Um, so that's what we, we, that made it, that made it challenging. But what made it actually successful with the results was, of course, they adopted the contract we proposed. Why? Because they understood the reality of our situation. But also, they understood their role in how to try to reverse the situation as well. Um, so those are the results of doing it. Um, and once again, the challenge is getting them to see it from your perspective. And once again, I think it's, once again, you listen, you understand their concerns, and once you understand that, you're able to frame the challenge in a way that now they can actually work towards a solution. And I think that was one of the things that made it a solution, where it wasn't a big agonizing of collective bargaining thing. They accepted the first offer that we did, and we moved forward. Uh, so that's been my experience, but I think with a union, to make collective bargaining successful, you have to have open dialogue, and you have to be transparent. If you're not transparent, then they're gonna say, we're hiding it, or they might say something like that, but not really. But they're gonna just not really believe what you're saying. So once you're transparent, and you share the data, then it really helps the collective bargaining process move along. So that's been my success, and the results in terms of collective bargaining in my experience.
Mr. Bailey.
The, this is a couple of questions. What are the- Alrighty. So what are the important issues in creating a good board-superintendent relationship? And how do you facilitate such a relationship? Second question is, how will you communicate with this board?
Okay, so the first part of your question is superintendent and school board relationship. It starts with, and we talked about this earlier, it starts with trust. You have to trust the fact that I'm gonna give you good advice, and I'm gonna be honest with you about our challenges and what we need to do moving forward to be successful. It starts with that type of trust, because we're gonna make tough decisions together. You're in the community, so I think it's important that we understand, and we have that type of trust, that I wouldn't put you out there and vice versa. So I think that's number one. We start with a trust, a trust in position, then of course, we develop that trust moving forward. Um, I think it's hard to have a school board-superintendent relationship without trust. Because one, it, it, superintendent can't put you in a bad position, and vice versa. Um, the also part of the school board relationship is, like you mentioned, communication. So in terms of communication, um, I actually polled my principals. I, I really wanted to know, how am I communicating with you guys? What do I need to improve upon? And so the rating was a nine point zero four out of ten. That, that's where they rated my communication skills. So I think, I say that because in terms of communication, I'm gonna communicate with you guys as a group, and I'll also communicate individually when appropriate. If there's a concern, say for example, you email me a concern while I was at the gas station, and this person says something about referencing the high school, I'm gonna take their concern, I'm gonna address it, and I'm gonna reply to the rest of the board, so everybody's gonna know. Um, I think that's a way for me to be transparent about what's going on in the district as well. And then also, I think it's very important that, um, school boards in Michigan, they don't pay. This is a very volunteer-ish position. So with that being said, I think it's important to know why you're on the board, what are your, what are your passions, and how can I help facilitate some of those passions that you have about children in the district? So I think, to get to know you guys, communicate as a group, also communicate individually as well. Um, I think that's how you have a good relationship moving forward. But the big thing, the most important thing is, besides open communication, effective communication that I'm gonna definitely have, I think it's just a fact of having trust. If you don't have trust, you don't have a relationship. Can't, I talk about school board-superintendent relationship, think about a relationship with your wife, or your, your mother, or your sister. If you don't have trust, you don't have a relationship. So I think that's the most important variable in that, to make it a successful group. So that's how I move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Floyd.
Tell us about a challenging experience in bringing a diverse group of people to consensus on a difficult issue. How do you provide leadership, and what was the final outcome?
Okay, um, so, we have a school in Detroit Public Schools called Bates Academy. It's one of the premier schools in the city of Detroit, has a long history of, of producing, uh, of wide, who are talented and gifted students, who go out and do great things. I know one Bates Academy graduate who's on CNN regularly, um, PhD from University of Michigan. So it's just a great school. And I, and you mentioned the word diverse, it is diverse, because your kids can go there from very different socioeconomic backgrounds. So they might be the same color, but they're diverse in their SES. So they might be the same color, but they're diverse in their SES. And Bates, through emergency management, was not managed like it was in the past. So that was the situation when I became the assistant superintendent over Bates is, and my superintendent said, I need you to rebuild the academic culture at that school to make it the crown jewel that it is. Because currently, well, the last time I took M-Step, Bates was the number four school in the city when usually it was no graduate group was always number one. So we had that to compete with. So that's kind of the situation laid out. And so task really was to get the staff and then the parents on board in terms of what is, in terms of consensus, what is the improvement that we need to see for the academic culture here? So it's one thing for me to come in and say, well, I think we need to do that, why isn't it? But then once again, if you want to bring, get consensus, and that's what I needed in that situation because those parents will fire off emails to the superintendent. It was to make sure that I got a consensus of what the plan of action was. So their recommendation was, we change how students are admitted to the school, we change how students are retained at the school, we change the entire notion of what academics is at the school. So, and what I mean by that, we have, there was no type of celebrations for getting an A. It was kind of like, you got an A, that's what you're expected to do. So we really came up with a campaign to leave behind and then we called Expect Excellence. So that was what the parents came up with. We want to expect excellence at that school. This is what we expect. No fighting, not that that was an issue, but no fighting, good grades, and then when you do great things, we will celebrate you. So that's something we built in terms of bringing people in, listening to them, but getting consensus. So once again, parent-driven, student-driven, students had a voice as well, what was missing. And so when they really said that, hey, we have to really look at how people or students are admitted to the school and then how long you can stay at school, that really was a big thing that we had to really implement. And so the result, we haven't seen the results yet, we haven't taken M-Step yet, but in terms of our internal assessment, which is I am ready, Bates is now the number one school in our core because they're actually number two when I first took over. So there has been improvement in academics at the school. So once again, it was bringing people in, listening to them, but also having them provide the feedback to drive what we were going to do. But once we did that, it was big that we actually incorporated their recommendations. And when you bring consensus, I think that's really what needs to happen. They, people say what they need and then you actually, as a school leader, you make it happen. So that's my experience with building consensus.
Trustee Gray.
What practices and procedures do you or would you use to keep your board informed?
Can you read that or can you do that?
What practices and procedures do you or would you use to keep your board informed?
Well, in terms of being informed, I think there's multiple ways to look at that. So in Detroit Public Schools currently, our board is informed through, we have a special email system for them. So they're given not just things that are happening in the district, but are also given information relative to things happening around education. So in terms of being informed, I think it's being informed around two things. It's informed around what's happening in the district, and that, I think, is what happened in weekly emails in my current role, and it's hard for me to get the situation, but in my current role, I don't directly inform the board unless there's a specific challenge at my school that generates your board member. Okay? So moving forward, if I was a superintendent, it would be informing on two different levels I mentioned. It would be around what's happening in the district and the weekly communication, and also what's happening in terms of education right now. Because the one thing I think is happening right now in education that we really need to look at is the inequity of funding in the state of Michigan. It's not fair that certain zip codes get just a bigger share. And so I think as a board, that's one of the educational issues that I would like to keep you informed of, but also what can we do as a superintendent board team to address inequity in Michigan? I do think that as elected officials, you do have a voice, and so once again, to advocate the right way for our students is something I think is important. So in terms of being informed, it will be that way, but I also believe in weekly communication. That's how I communicate with my principals and a weekly basis, but I also would do that with school board members as well. This is the weekly communication, refer to me here, week number 30, these are things happening, so on and so forth, these are things you need to work for, you need to be aware of, and these are things that might be a potential challenge or opportunity for you to think about in terms of our work together. But always keep you guys prepared for board meetings and another part of being informed as well. So what are the things around budget that you need to know, what are the things around discipline that you need to know, school discipline, what are the things happening at N U E, and also believe those are things important that we're going to afford minimum levels in weekly.
What unique skills or leverage could you bring to this position and how will Redford Union students and staff be served by this?
Well, I think the unique skills is, I think I mentioned it in the opening, just demonstrate the ability to get student achievement gains. I think that that is the skill I bring. I also believe another skill that I mentioned also is leadership development. I think to, once again, improve the quality of what you're doing, you have to develop leaders in the schools. And I've been working with principals and superintendents since 2015, so I have that skill set to really improve the leadership capacity and build capacity at the school level. So I think I bring that skill. The other skill I believe is an actual expertise in terms of data analysis, understanding data, understanding training, but also action planning from the data. I bring that skill as well. Also a knowledge of education policy, what policies are advantageous to refer, what policies are, might be a disadvantage to refer. And I think the last skill I think would make me someone that you would want to consider hiring for your superintendent position is, I know how to communicate with people and I know how to bring people together. It's easier to sit here and say that, but you haven't seen me on the news because I don't create those type of issues. I solve issues, I solve problems. That's how, that's just how I'm wired. So I bring those interpersonal skills to make people feel good, also to solve problems. And so those are skills I bring to refer you, but the big one is really helping to move the needle for students because if we move the needle for students, that translates into opportunities for them, and I'm very aware of that. So it's not one thing to say, well, we work from this proficiency to that proficiency, but that change, or the student being able to read better, really changes the outcome for that student. So I say that. And lastly, even though I have my packet here, and we probably might not talk about it, the also skill I have is understanding why people roll and disenroll in schools. I know enrollment's a challenge, I would say a challenge throughout the metro Detroit area, but also what does it take to get people to come to a school? How do you rebrand a district where people want to be there? So I bring that skill as well.
Thank you. We appreciate your interest in our superintendent position. The board is interviewing a number of candidates, and we will contact you if you are selected as a final. We thank you for coming and we enjoy meeting with you this evening.
Same here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Robinson, thanks for being here. His video's going to be tight. Following the interview questions, you will have the opportunity to ask questions and then include remarks as time allows. We've had the opportunity to review your resume. Please tell us how your background and experience made you a good fit to be Redford Union's duck superintendent and why you want to be superintendent.
First off, let me begin by saying thank you to this board and community for this opportunity to discuss how I might add my skill set to servicing children and their families and Redford Union. My background in education is a 30-year compilation. I like to think of it as both experience, both practical and theoretical, only practical. I was a classroom teacher for 18 years, teaching in math and sciences. In the last 12 years of my career, I've served in various administrative positions where I was able to display, learn, and develop my leadership practices. On the theoretical, I am an adjunct at Wayne State in teacher preparation and training, which I think has become most essential as we are now in this, wake of this pandemic and education is in need of a redefined definition. And I also have done extensive leadership training in educational leadership administration with Eastern Michigan University. I feel I'm the best fit for this position because, again, as we are in the wake of the pandemic, education has the challenge of redefining itself in the immediate imagine. As we come into the end of one school year and the beginning of another, I think we need to, as educators and in communities, look at how we can better serve students and their families by reinforcing that infrastructure that supports the goals and objectives that we all have for our children. I'm somewhat philosophical about my dedication to education. I look at it from the same lenses as both doctors and lawyers, all of which have the oaths of their clients, their students, their patients have been better for the time that they were in our presence. And so I think the next superintendent should be someone that has that imagination, has that training, and has that experience to not only educate, but to redefine and innovate in the area of education, again, for the service and better outcomes for our students.
Thank you. I think I'm now going to turn it over to our vice president for the next question, Ms. Robinson.
Please share an example of a time you have led a sustained multi-year improvement initiative, be specific regarding the situation, the test event, your specific role in the Yelton.
During one of the restructuring periods within Detroit Public Schools, I had the opportunity to serve as what was titled a deputy network leader of instruction, which would be the equivalent of an assistant superintendent, it was a fancy name. And as much as I had that experience, it was also during that time that Detroit Public Schools had embarked on some new curriculum initiatives and developed a strategic plan. During my time as deputy network leader of instruction, I supervised some 36 schools, six of which were high schools, and we embarked on some in-depth training in order to meet the academic goals and objectives that were, one, set by the district at the time, and primarily also those objectives that were given by the Michigan Department of Education. Much of that training involved redefining subject area and pedagogical techniques for teachers, and then also giving school leaders, department heads, principals, assistant principals, a unique vision into not just what was being done, but also different perspectives on the analysis and evaluation of the work and its impact on children. We began to see some initial significant rises in the academic achievement. Unfortunately, as was the case in a lot of the initiatives within Detroit, the initiative wasn't seen through, wasn't seen to within. We know as educators that, you know, any academic initiative takes, on average, three to five years to see any true foundational baseline data. And that wasn't, we didn't get the baseline, but it is significant to note that following that year, there were bumps in the academic achievement across the board, particularly in K-12. And I like to think that it was in part because of the work that we began that year during my time as deputy network leader. I do know that some of the work was transformative in that it reconnected teachers and educators and realigned the goals and objectives for ever-reaching students and gave some new techniques, I think. The best aspect of any educator is their commitment to continue being a leader and a learner in the field that they practice.
Secretary Robinson.
Hi. Managing vision and purpose involves anticipating future trends, creating a compelling vision, and communicating that vision. Describe a situation that conveys your capability in this area.
I think one of the, one of my, I guess sometimes I'm told to my deficiency is being over-analytical. I watch education, I watch the trends, the ebbs and flows, and I believe it incumbent upon any educational leader to be aware of not just what's going on in education, but also be aware of what the lived experiences of those people being affected by these changes are. There are a lot of educational policies and initiatives that look good on paper, may have worked in other areas, but it is incumbent upon a leader to know what the best fit is for the students in that district. And so as much as you gather that type of information, you also need to be able to communicate it. And I believe that in sharing a vision, you most first communicate servant leadership and let parents know that but for their willingness to enroll their children in Redford Union School District, we don't have a job. Our main goal is to educate children. And I think once you establish the trust and the commitment to educating children, then visions don't become that hard to communicate. Again, I believe at the core of any parent is the sincere desire for their children to be better off than they were at the beginning of the school year. And so in sharing that vision and communicating effectively, openly, transparently, then the vision then can turn into some practical means. Sometimes there's sacrifices to be made, sometimes there are just inevitabilities and resources and the actions to be taken, but in sharing the vision openly and honestly, you can get over some of the barriers of trust and really deal with some of the challenges in education by first establishing a relationship and a commitment. And I like to always add a commitment and philosophy of how students and their education should be the central focus of all educators involved. And I believe sharing a clear vision is a part, a very big part of that work.
Thank you.
Secretary Pridey. Share a situation that demonstrates your ability to create a climate in which valuing diversity is the norm. What are your experiences in working in a diverse community?
That could be too bold. I would, I'll say this, during my time as a principal and a district leader, I was tasked with many of the consolidation efforts that Detroit underwent during some of its financial crisis. And as much, I have been charged on three separate occasions with consolidating, closing, and combining school cultures and communities in order to meet the objectives of the district's restructuring. And so to that end, diversity and acknowledging diversity, making sure all the voices of stakeholders is clearly heard. leadership and allowed parents to, or individual stakeholders if we will, to see that, one, I'm there to serve, two, that my objective is to make children better than they were before the experience began, and then also that there are differences. You know, sometimes in a society, we can get caught up on differences being detrimental or being harmful, but to be different doesn't mean that I'm right or wrong. It just means we're different. And I think inasmuch as we as individuals come together and, you know, try and agree, put all things on the table in transparency and on those very tough issues, sometimes we have to agree to be disagreeable, but always keep the focus of why we come together in those communities. And that process has been very successful for me. I have adhered myself to almost every community that I have been in. I like to make the impression, I like to lead the impression of my commitment to community, to working together, and to establishing a harmony that doesn't leave anybody out, does not dismiss or disenfranchise. And I've been relatively successful in doing that, and I think ultimately, children are the better that.
Pressed by more?
So tell us about your experiences with student discipline and restorative justice and how you address these practices while also ensuring equity in the final outcome?
A very large part of the body of work that I've done as an educator has having the opportunity to have been a part of the creation of the school in the Malcolm X Academy. Malcolm X Academy is the first African-centered public school in the United States, which I was a original staff member. I highlight Malcolm X and its efforts in that it was specifically designed to address the needs of children, in this particular case, African-American children within the city of Detroit. So inasmuch as it has been, it was a project to lift children, there were also the issues of equity and equality. You know, we still live and work in a field where we have defined what equality is, but we have not yet come to a full definition on equity. That is ensuring that every child has what he or she needs to be academically successful. So inasmuch as I worked at Malcolm X, we were able to traverse a lot of difficult territory in making sure that children had equity and/or that be properly advocated for that equity in the education of our children. We brought together a lot of diverse and diverse scholarly minds in order to plot out those best initiatives that would meet our goals. And what I found as I was at Malcolm X, and now I serve as the principal of the combined academies of Paul Robeson and Malcolm X, I've seen a lot of the challenges that existed 30 years ago now, still remain monumental roadmaps and in some cases, challenged obstacles in what we do today, but I think when we keep the main thing the main thing, and that is the development of children and the responsibility that we as educators have to make a free, fair, equitable education available to our students, that there are certain objectives that we as the adults and the educators must overcome, and the parents and the communities must overcome. And I think that it's an ever-changing process where the skill constantly changes, the targets constantly change, but it's incumbent upon the leader to, again, stay objective, stay current, and then also be open, because as things change, so do communities, so do parents, and so do the needs of children.
Thank you.
Pressed by more?
How did you learn about earning trust in previous positions and how did you go about doing so and chosen for this position?
Establishing trust. Again, I think one of the stalwarts of my leadership has been my openness and my willingness to be a person that displays my commitment to being a lifelong learner within those type relationships that, you know, I guess I can look at your question in two different dynamics in that, you know, with teachers and establishing trust, those that I will be leading in the efforts of our work. I think my best attribute has been that as an administrator, I never forgot what it was like to be a classroom teacher. I've always kept the initial focuses and those things important to teachers as a forefront in my leadership. I believe people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care, and you must care enough to let teachers know that, you know, we have goals that we have set, we have certain things that we must do in order to achieve these goals, and, you know, we also have, I have also experienced in my leadership that everyone likes change until change comes to them, then it becomes a challenge. And so I believe you can only get people to trust you and to follow you when they know that, one, you know where they're coming from, that their concerns and their challenges are your concerns and your challenges, and that, you know, that success and failure are separate. In every place that I play at, I've made it abundantly clear that my success, that their success is my success, and then likewise, that their failure is my failure, but our goal as colleagues and working together is for the success of all. And then likewise with the community, you know, it sort of goes back to the equity and diversity question in working with diverse groups. People must know you care, people must know you're informed. I always have made it a point of never asking anyone under my leadership to do anything, be a part of anything that I myself as a leader was not willing to be a part of. People need to not just hear about leadership, not just read about leadership, but they need to feel and see leadership. And so those are the type of leadership traits that I have put forth, and it has been somewhat transformative when people see to the detriment, my wife doesn't always like it, but, you know, they see me working till late hour, not leaving. I've had people bring things to me, you know, you've been here all day, you have to be. These are things that we would discount as being little things, but it's the little things that I believe go a long way in establishing trust and belief, that there's a real leader at helm and that he or she will not make decisions that are not in the best interest of children and the community. It's a process, respect, trust is earned, you can't walk in the room, become a part of a situation, and inasmuch as it's a process, we must carry ourselves ethically, honestly, morally, so that people can believe in the leadership that is expected from the positions that they hold within any organization, environment, community, etc.
Pressed by more?
Please tell us what the term culturally competent means. Can you give an example of how you navigate this territory?
Culturally competent? In education, it's a detailed process, basically being aware of what every person within the community is in need of. It goes a little further than what you read and what's in a book, but it also goes to the perception of the individual, that even the children. I believe this becomes a paramount process for a superintendent because cultural competency also extends into the service to the families. How will the goals and objectives of the school district, by definition, the school, the teacher, the classroom teacher, how will those goals and objectives be seen and adhered to? How will the community step up, ignore, become a part of if the competence of who it is you're talking to, what it is that has to be done, is communicated and displayed effectively? I'll give one example of the cultural competence, and then it extends back to my work at the state level. I participated in many of the, and I hate myself when I say I worked on committees to develop the LEAK test, but I also have worked on the same committees with M-Step. And just one aspect, I don't mean to oversimplify the definition of cultural competence, but one definition was in children being able to see themselves in the lessons, in the curriculum, in the test questions that we give them on standardized tests. You lose a child if that child's not able to directly connect that story problem, that piece of literature, that news article, to who he or she is and where he or she is within their community. As in one lens, we don't acknowledge their lived experiences. And so it was a very telling work and one that this, in all of my time on these committees, that the state was very committed to providing that extra application of cultural competence and making sure that teachers were trained appropriately, being sure that there were diversity and that there was a clear variance in the questions and where these questions were at, where they were, where these questions were asked. I won't get into the weeds on how that test is done, but just making sure that the questions were diverse in their application. And then also the teachers and the parents, I've always done, and in my leadership now and in the past, I've gone a long way in making sure parents also are aware of these important tests and these important initiatives and these outside consultants that can come into a school district and influence and guide policy in the education of children. And so inasmuch as we are culturally competent, again, the perception of how the work we do is perceived must be held in the highest regard because without the parents, having as many parents behind the school district and, again, believing and trusting in the leadership that has been provided, then there's some initiatives that fail on face because we're not able to properly get the buy-in and encouragement. And I believe the acknowledgement of who your audience is is a very big step in acknowledging that. And I'll say again, as I stop, and that is that I don't want to oversimplify because there are also some very, there's also some very tough terrain in acknowledging cultural competence, and one of that is just getting beyond our implicit biases. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know, or why we don't know what we don't know. And so in vetting that and getting to the heart of that, there's a lot of cultural competence because we are where we come from. We've all been culturalized through a process of culturalization, and I believe that can be the biggest part of the definition of cultural competence and the need to engage at all levels, specifically within a school district.
Tell us how you maintain visibility and accessibility for staff, parents, and community leaders?
As I said earlier, I very seldom go home and I don't sleep that much. I am an avid reader. I consume information in mass quantities. Sometimes I come home and my wife asks me who I am because I haven't been here. But to that end, visibility again is people seeing your leadership, seeing you with your hands, you know, on the cloud if you will, being there, you know, that which you expect, you must inspect. And I don't necessarily like the word inspect, but if I'm leading in a direction of making changes in the curriculum, making changes to our district's climate and culture, again, I can't ask parents, teachers, administrators, community members to do anything that I'm not willing to do. And part of that is being visible, being accessible. I have always established open lines of communication, you know, text me. My teachers used to ask, at Robeson Malcolm X, they used to ask, you know, I give my district cell phone, why would you do that? Well, it goes a long way in me avoiding some of the complaints about, well, we can't reach Dr. Robinson, or we have this complaint. All right, Bill, not only can you text me on my district cell, call me on my district cell, I have a place where I can be emailed, especially within our virtual environment. I've got a corner there. Visibility and again, trust is sort of what will add to some of the other questions in that we are able to, when I'm seen, what am I seen doing? When they hear me, what do they hear me saying? Is my message about leading? I'll say, I don't think it's, is my message about leading Redford Union consistently? Has it been, is it being applied not with a simple goal or vision, but am I taking what we want to do to where the students are and then plotting a way forward to where it is we want to go? And so inasmuch as visibility is a part of that, I believe it's also the presence that's established in that visibility. People can see you doing nothing. People can see you saying or hear you and, or hear the words you're saying, and they're not, they're not following, it's not meaning anything. But I believe to have to visibility is to be seen and heard within the context and the intentionality of my being there, and that's to be an educated, educational leader. And again, all this happening in the service of children. And I am a stalwart in every place I've been to say, if you don't come in my presence, if you don't come to work and be there for children, I'm not there necessarily, I like respect for our work to be established before relationship because our children deserve no less than 150% of every educator that comes into the environment. And visibility and maintaining, to go back to the question, is a big part of that. I'm an avid educator, and I believe that, you know, we need more commitment at a time that the education of our children has become so vital.
Mr. Asses?
Often we learn from successfully, successfully facing challenges or experiencing mistakes or failures. Please share a time when this was the case to you. What did you learn from this experience? How did you apply it to your life?
I'm sorry, could you say the first part of that again? I think the first part.
Often we learn from successfully facing challenges or experiencing mistakes or failures. Please share a time when this was the case to you. What did you learn from the experience? How did you apply it to your life?
I guess I kind of also said overlapping challenges, success and failure. One of the things that I've found in my leadership is that oftentimes, my leadership is dependent upon the leadership, the information that I receive from those that I'm responsible to. And I give that as an example because I'll say in just the last year, with the ebbs and flows and the effects of the pandemic, the information that I gave to my parents and community at the beginning, it often changed overnight. I mean, I said something at eight o'clock, and it changed by 12 noon. But one of the ways to face challenges and you deal with the, I like the word, ebbs and flows of that leadership is being willing to stand for what you say and then being person enough to come back and give open and honest, transparent answers as to why things change. You know, sometimes we shy away from the hard conversations that we have to have with parents and students. And, you know, one of the responsibilities of leadership is that there are things that come to my desk that I'm responsible for, and in my execution of that responsibility also comes the need to
What did you learn from this experience? How did you apply it to your life?
I'm sorry, could you say the first part of that again? I didn't catch the first part.
Often we learn from successfully facing challenges or experiencing mistakes or failures. Please share a time when this was the case for you. What did you learn from the experience? How did you apply it to your life?
I guess I kind of also said overlapping challenges, success and failure. One of the things that I've found in my leadership is that oftentimes my leadership is dependent upon the leadership, the information that I receive from those that I'm responsible to. And I give that as an example because I'll say in just the last year, with the ebbs and flows and the effects of the pandemic, information that I gave to my parents and community at the beginning, it often changed overnight. I mean, I said something at eight o'clock and it changed by 12 noon. But one of the ways you face challenges and you deal with the, I like the word ebbs and flows of that leadership, is being willing to stand for what you say and then being person enough to come back and give open and honest, transparent answers as to why things change. You know, sometimes we shy away from the hard conversations that we have to have with parents and students. And, you know, one of the responsibilities of leadership is that there are things that come to my desk that I'm responsible for. And in my execution of that responsibility also comes the need to speak to what needs to be done or in some cases, why it needed to be done, was not done. And I always try and give my leadership in this area, my, in various situations that I could bore you with, that I've been a part of, in my ability to, again, present myself as the leader and then take responsibility for it. And sometimes it's the proverbial fall on your sword. And, you know, let the community know, you know, not point fingers or not, you know, try and put someone, you know, put someone on the spot, but if it happens, again, irrelevant, in Redford Union, then no matter who did it, no matter when it happened, at the end of the day, the superintendent is responsible, had to give that explanation. But that's the context in which I provide my leadership. I provide it in explanation, I don't provide it in the form of excuses. You people, parents, community members don't respond, you know, to excuses because excuses often are given to absolve one of responsibility. Now, head guy, the buck stops on my desk, then I have to give not only what happened, but here it is in the end of the question, and that is what I'm going to do to fix it. How will I provide a solution to the problem? And so I believe that goes a long way in getting over the challenges and also celebrating the successes. Everyone has to be able to see some part of success in a district. Oftentimes in education, we only focus on what has happened, what's not happening. But we also have to more, give more attention to the successes of a school district. I believe that there'd be more to celebrate about children than there ever is to complain about, than there ever is to detract from what teachers and students do in classrooms. Again, that comes with the focus of the leadership and the willingness to allow people to be open, free, transparent, and create safe zones. You know, you can't lead effectively if those that you lead, or in the case of children and students and families, if the environment doesn't offer itself to openness and the ability to communicate and be safe and not fear retribution, but resolution to the concerns that may come about.
Ms. Robinson. Tell us, I'm sorry, tell us what budget development process you used to gain broad support for the final result.
Of the budgeting, in my experience, it's been twofold, but I believe both would apply, I mean, with my experience. It's been student-driven zero-based budgeting. It has been the assessment of the needs of both teachers and students in relation to not just what was done, but the objectives that we undertake. I've done this at the school level and then during my time as interim director of professional development for the district. And these were in the times when the district took 1% of the total of its annual school budget and placed it into professional development. I highlight that because the aspect of providing for students and teachers is still somewhat an anomaly in the budgeting process. It becomes somewhat of a theoretical challenge to continue to add teachers to increased academic achievement and then not take into consideration, and this is a broad example, but not take into consideration not just what they need to do it, but the training they need to do it. And so in student-driven zero-based budgeting, there must be an intersection, a synthesis of all the aspects that are included in the definition of achievement and success within a school district. And so, you know, there are various other methods and rubrics that I have been exposed to, but I've found that the zero-based, having a clear objective of what needs to be spent, having ample opportunities to reassess, realign, and allow school administrators to give redirections to budgets. Then a part of the strategic plan for any school year should be what we do on the end of zero-based budgeting to make sure that all funds and resources that have been allocated for a particular school year are effectively used. It's a process that can be undertaken with many different applications, but budgeting from my standpoint has been a combination of theory and practice. Not every budgetary method and guideline given by the state is the best for a particular school district. Again, it goes back to applying the necessity of curriculum and design, projects and programming, outside consulting. It must all be representative and the students in the district and their needs be taken at the highest power. And so that would be my experience and I've done it on a couple of levels and in all of the leadership positions that I've held, especially in my last 12 years of being school administrator, district leader.
Ms. President.
Tell us about your involvement in collective bargaining in general and describe the most challenging negotiation you have conducted. What was so challenging about it? Which of your negotiating techniques was most effective? And what were the results?
Okay. Again, I would reflect in, I believe, the most relevant and direct involvement that I've had with teacher negotiations in Detroit. Again, I would reflect on my time as interim director of professional development and my need to add to the conversations in contract negotiations that which was needed by both on the teacher and the student side. I admittedly was not, have not been a part of the committees that made the decision, but I was able and have been a part of significantly contributing to those items and issues of negotiation put on the table for unions and districts to negotiate, being clear with the objectives of the funding that was needed, giving long-term projections on the usefulness and the ability of these, of the training and the money spent, connecting them to district goals and objectives, both district-level and building. And I mean those distinctions because districts often have the issues of infrastructure. And that falls over into teacher negotiations and having an adequate teaching environment, having the resources. So having been a part of those conversations and contributing to it, I've been and was consulted many times in negotiations with Detroit. And I'll just say for the record, you haven't been a part of a teacher negotiation until you've been a part of one in the city of Detroit. But in that same vein, I believe I worked with some of the best educators in the state of Michigan and they reside with the Detroit Public Schools. But what I've found is that the needs, the issues, they're overlapping. It doesn't matter if you're in Detroit, education as a field is challenged. And so, you know, if you're not able to present your objectives in a negotiation that meets and falls within the vision and willingness of the teachers, then, you know, by definition, the school district is dead on the line if it doesn't have the buy-in of the most important employee within the district, and that is the teachers. And so that would be one involvement. And then I've also was involved in negotiations with the New York School District. This would be during the 16, 17 school year when I was consulted in negotiations of their development for a teacher professional development project where the school district and the union created a space to professionally develop, retrain teachers with the goal of reintegrating them into classrooms. Again, there was a in-depth drill down. What do we have? What can we do with what we have? And how will bringing those two elements together better improve the teacher in service of children? And so in as much as I like to think, and again, I was not there when they signed the contract, but I do know that this was, and this initiative was one that went a long way in that contract for that particular year being signed when those teachers in need of retraining, those teachers in need of having their field or their subject matter rearticulated to them in terms of curriculum delivery. It went a long way in the union working with the school district for that contract. So on both sides, I know what it takes and look forward to the challenges of actually being the person in the room that signed. I know it needs to be signed early on, but it is a complex process that, again, all the information needed and all of the objectives and the needs of those involved should be adhered to and respected.
Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Robinson, there's a couple of questions in this one.
Mr. Bailey, you can go off.
Yeah. So there's a couple of questions involved in this one question. What are the most, what are the important issues in creating a good board-superintendent relationship? And how do you facilitate such a relationship? And the next part is, how will you communicate with this board?
I think one of the first aspects of establishing a good superintendent-board relationship is the acknowledgement of the roles and responsibilities that each hold. As superintendent, I realize first and foremost that it is this board's responsibility to set a policy and that it is my goal, would be my goal as superintendent to implement that policy within the context of leading teachers in the education of students. Once the respect for and the acknowledgement of roles, and then the respect rolls over into openness about why are we hearing what we're doing? Why are we doing it? I believe there to be lots of conversations that can be had, but going back to the respect for that role, if a way that I am leading is not consistent with the board, it is my job as superintendent to correct the direction, to make sure that those working with me in the administration of the district are keeping in line with the policies and objectives that have been set by the board. This is a process, again, that is built, would be built over time. I believe you don't really know a person until you take the time to hear their lived experiences, get their perspectives on education, and then reach that plateau where, you know, once we know each other, then we begin to work and trust deals. In terms of communication, if we've learned anything in the last couple of years, it's the depth and breadth of the ability to communicate. I personally have, I'm an email guy, texting. I like video conferences. I like to be able to see things, we're using that shot in terms of being able to communicate. But I believe that one of the main responsibilities of a superintendent to the board and goes a long way with establishing a relationship would also be timeliness, not letting me read something on the paper, or read something in the paper, hear about it in the six o'clock or six, 10, or 11 news cycle. When it happens, superintendent need have systems and processes in place to where they know right away and the board knows right away. And then there'd be a willingness to call that emergency meeting if necessary and/or establish a system of communication. And I am aware of a few where what I know, what I see shows up on a device established and agreed to by the board. There are a number of secure ways to transmit knowledge and communicate. And I believe it would be incumbent upon the superintendent to develop a system supported by the infrastructure in the district to first and foremost keep board members informed. The relationship, you know, leadership is a sort of a, it's a trial and error. I believe openness, transparency being first and foremost. It's not always that people know, they hear what you say, but they don't always know what you think. And so when there are, you know, when those two are uneven, it's my job, it would be my job to always be sure you not only heard what I said, but that what I was saying was effective and communicating what's happened, maybe what's needed. And we can come together on any policy or action to be taken first and foremost to uphold the respectability and commitment to education here in Redford Union. So it's a process of communication and, you know, providing and keeping as many avenues of communication as there are available. And being a part of my time in the classroom and I'm somewhat of a tech now, I look forward to some of those, that innovation of communication that I can bring in my service to the district.
Thank you.
Ms. Chloe.
Tell us about the challenges you experienced in bringing a diverse group of people to consensus on a difficult issue. How did you provide leadership and what was the final outcome?
One of my most recent adverse situation was an issue with standardized testing that developed about two, three years ago now when there was much conversation at both the community and professional level about standardized testing being used to the benefit of children as opposed to the detriment of school districts. And the conversation in this particular situation had developed where parents had decided and it was an initiative for parents to opt out of the state test. Again, it was a diverse issue. It filled out of my particular school. It was a community issue for which I was looked to provide input and direction. And so it goes back to my earlier comments about being willing to have those hard conversations, to be able to acknowledge, all right, I hear what your concern is about the test, but also be willing to break down and explain the importance of the test and how the test affected district budget and our ability to receive several funds. These are conversations that I'll say the average parent may not necessarily be aware of, but in times of crises, and this was clearly a crisis at the point of parents deciding they were not going to send their children to take this test. I had to give the information. I had to make everyone and their points feel appreciated and acknowledged. And then I had to give that vision, going back to the question earlier, on where we could come out together in this test being something of a benefit as opposed to the detriment that posed, not just to my school, but across the district. And so the outcome was that a lot of the parents that originally decided they were going to opt out, didn't opt out. We still had some that maintained their position, but I also had to be the principal on the other side of the test that still, you know, explained where we were, you know, hard conversation. This is how many tested, this is how many didn't test, and these are the implications for this environment and then connect them to the broader implications within the district. I believe I did a very good job, and I'm going to say a very good job because one of the aspects is I did not lose enrollment. This was a situation where parents, because of the information that was and maybe was not provided, decided to just, you know, take their children elsewhere. In Detroit, it's always, it's always been somewhat of a challenge to keep our children enrolled and then not let them or see them go to charter schools that surround the district. I didn't lose any enrollment. I have a few parents that still looked at me sideways a little bit in terms of the outcome, but we stayed together. Excuse me, we stayed together in the school, we stayed together in the community. And many of those same parents of which there was contention and there was controversy during the testing period, we left with mutual respect for each other. We left with me having given definitions and directions for how those students could obtain extra help or how they could be a part of a program that would, you know, make up for maybe some of the academics, the academic deficiencies they may have had, which, you know, was all tied into the same conversation. So that was one way where, you know, the diversity of the group, the concerns, the lived experiences, and then the ability, my ability to speak to them in such a manner that kept them a part of the conversation, didn't isolate anyone, and the conversation was able to carry us through the test, through the testing period to the other side, and we navigated where we needed to go from there. So I could give you many others, but that would be one of my most recent directly connected to the work that I've done in school leadership and the positions that I've been.
Ms. Gray.
What practices and procedures do you or would you use to keep your board informed?
To keep my board informed? Again, phone call, direct communication. I believe in the board environment that I've served in, and I believe that if I don't communicate with anyone first, it would be the president of the board needs to hear from the superintendent in any and all matters. Again, the electronics, I'd like to, I would establish a process for which there was a device, there was a method, there was a platform that our board could adhere to, to get information directly from me. There are now systems within platforms like Office 365 where there are secure encrypted areas that can be signed into that I would establish a process of my administrators working with me, keeping that area updated with the most relevant information on test scores, situations at individual buildings. That can also be set up to give daily alerts, email alerts, to where every time that the platform is updated, I believe it to be SharePoint if I'm not mistaken, but every time that SharePoint is updated, the board would be given a sense, a message that has been an update to SharePoint. This would be a platform for, shall we define, ordinary time in terms of just the daily operation, weekly operation, but in time of crises or concern for the community. It'd be a direct phone call, a direct text message, and/or in, from the platforms that I'm familiar with, we're Zooming tonight. We have Microsoft Teams. We have, nobody really uses Skype anymore, but it's there in terms of my ability to video conference. And again, you be able to contact me directly, and I think one of the good aspects, I'll say, again, I don't Zoom much. So I'm getting those updates, and all those who work with me know that my intensity or the intensity of my leadership demand they know what I need them to know when I need to know it. And that it fell over into my accountability to this board, you to know what you need to know and you need to know it, because we know how situations, the smallest, misinformation can go into a monumental issue that once the press hits it, then it's a monster that we have to slay together. But I believe when we are able to effectively communicate, many of those situations can be avoided. So Microsoft, Microsoft 365 and various apps that are available, secure encrypted apps, Android, Apple, I'm an Apple guy myself, but there are a lot out there that would allow me to directly communicate with the board.
What unique skills or leverage could you bring to this position and how will Redford Union students and staff be served by this?
Unique skills that I bring in, I like to think being in this era of our need to reimagine and redesign some aspects of education have been my work at the university level. One thing I've always done, especially as a principal, was kept my finger on the pulse of new teachers coming into the field. Again, I adhere to the profession of education just the way I do law and medicine, in that we must train teachers with the philosophical and moral aspects of the importance of the work of educating children. So to that end, I'm an adjunct, starting a class next month as a matter of fact, of getting pre-service teachers in the right places to deliver service to children in classrooms. There's often a departure of the theoretical and the practical. I think the leverage I bring is my work in developing climate and culture in schools. I have been very successful, again, in the climate and cultures that I have nurtured during my time in leadership. This doesn't extend just to my leadership at Robeson Mount Damex, but in a lot of the diverse situations in which I've found myself, I've established myself as that person that listens and that provides transformative servant leadership. There is something to be that person that is acknowledged as when you bring it to Dr. Robinson, Dr. Robinson is going to bend over backwards. Dr. Robinson is going to put all utility at his disposal, at his disposal, to bring about a solution. And so to that end, having that leverage and that ability will allow me as superintendent to traverse some difficult territory and terrain in those hard conversations. And then, again, in leading the most important aspects of this district, which what I consider, I would consider the teachers, my leverage in never forgetting what a teacher, what their concerns are. I know about the concerns of teachers and the adherence to salary. I know about the concerns that teachers have about access to resources and inconsistency in the application of curriculum and the concerns of evaluation. You know, it's not just what's expected, but a superintendent must also take into consideration how what is expected is accomplished. And so I believe being present in these different elements of the conversations and the style of leadership that would be provided, my ability, my experience in traversing and working within them would give me, develop that trust, would develop that acknowledgement of diversity, would give me that visibility to backtrack on some of the questions that would be needed to, you know, make real change. The one thing that I've always, always shared in my leadership is that the one thing that children don't get back, that sometimes we as educators take for granted, is time. They don't get time back. And so I am, the leverage I bring is not just the open see, the transparency, the knowledge and the commitment, but it's also that sense of urgency. The default of our responsibility to children is also a default to our future. Every day, every moment that we could educate, that we don't educate, is in some way, shape, form, or fashion, a distraction from those doctors, lawyers, teachers, politicians that will be challenged at some point in maneuvering and navigating our society. And so all of that that are taken into consideration and the leverage that I bring with my leadership and my experience and my willingness to grow, by no means do I come in saying that I know all there is to know. But I'll say this, if I don't know it, give me a little while, I'll learn it, and then once I learn it, I'll see how those around me are, what they're aware of, and I like to go to where people are and bring them to where they need to be. Again, all with the objectives of being the best service we can to students and their families.
We appreciate your interest in our superintendent position. Board is interviewing a number of candidates, and we will contact you if you are selected as a finalist. We really want to thank you for coming in. It's a pleasure meeting you.
I thank you for this opportunity, and I hold you for the possibility to serve Redford Union. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For candidates out online and in the room, we'll be closing the PBF forms in 10 minutes. Please take this opportunity to fill them out and so we can answer in place as we may get a decision.